Good morning, residents. How are you all? Is everybody doing well?
Yes.
Yes, great, great. I am standing in today for Mike. Mike is on a well-deserved vacation with his family. So I'll be emceeing this morning's activities. But my first question is, how come no one's in the front row? I mean, look at this. It's like, you students, did anybody used to sit in the front row? You did? Oh, God.
In a miniskirt.
In a miniskirt? Mrs. Blumberg, you did? Yeah. Yeah, you were a school teacher, right? Did you have a lot of people, like, sit in the back when you were teaching? Oh, okay, okay, very good. Anyways, well, welcome, everybody. Usually, Mike will bring up Maria LaSala to say a few words to our community. But I have to be honest with you, I am not even going to consider replicating what Maria LaSala says, because as you all know, when she speaks, it's so eloquent and what she says, the message is beautiful. So I'm not even going to go there. But where I will go is that it's been very warm outside, so I hope you are all getting out. But if you are getting out, just make sure that you hydrate. People don't realize that we do get dehydrated. Even though we don't feel thirsty, we do get dehydrated. So we do, Thomas and his team has put out these watering stations. So please, please welcome yourself to a glass of water and stay hydrated. I'd like to take this time to welcome our new resident since our last town meeting. It is Mr. Arnold Heizer in apartment 521. I'm not sure if he's here or not. But if not, welcome, welcome, Mr. Heizer. Also, I would like us now to all take a moment of silence to remember our three friends who have passed since our last meeting. Rita Eber, Ralph Jelsted, and Malcolm Rashba. So if we can just have a moment of silence for those three, thank you. Okay, thank you for that. So I remember back in May of 2021, there was a big smile on Peggy Joyce's face because we had just finished our first round of vaccines and everybody, we got rid of the mask and everybody was walking around and Peggy was just a happy camper. She's still a happy camper, but what goes around comes around. We still have COVID. So Peggy, I'm going to ask you to come up and give the first report. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm still very happy. Considering Whitney Center does have COVID cases, I'm still very happy because our numbers, they have crept up in the month of July and I'm going to report out exactly where we're at. But July was a rougher month for us. But if you, I'm going to also tell you how many people we tested. So if you look at the number of probable cases versus those that became positive, we're still doing well. So in the month, I went through the whole month of July because I was asked to give more than just, like, today's number because people were worried about what might have been yesterday, last week. So I did look at the entire month of July. So it's just about the full month and we're just shy a couple of days. And during the month, we had four residents up on our memory support unit that became positive. They're now, the majority of them are off quarantine, doing very well. Nobody really became very ill. Given the fact that they're on memory support, they're a little frailer. So it's great news that they were able to handle the COVID virus. And thanks to the vaccine and the great nursing care from the clinical staff, we made it through pretty unscathed. In the independent living, which is the whole managed residential community for the month of July, as of this morning, we have had seven residents infected. So I will tell you, the majority of those seven just happened this week. So this was a bad week for us, given the fact that there was only a couple earlier in the month. So again, my reminders, if you're traveling, please be careful. Make sure you're wearing a mask on the planes, the trains, the buses. Some of the residents are coming back infected. It's not everyone. We're finding people still are becoming infected just by going out to local travel or having visitors come in. So again, the number is higher than we're used to. But I want to tell you, the community health nursing team during the month of July actually tested 101 times. Maybe not 101 people, because as you know, everybody has to be tested three times. The day of exposure and then day three and five. So they went out into the community and actually tested 101 times. So out of those 101 tests, we only have seven people that turned positive. So it's all, you know, looking at a large number, it actually is very good. I know I'm an eternal optimist. Again, I've been accused of being too optimistic about COVID. But we have to continue. We have to learn to live with COVID. It's, I'm sorry to say, it's not going to go away. It's not what, I remember Mike and I, when COVID first came out, we had a little disagreement amongst ourselves, what day was it going to disappear? And, you know, we started in March of 2020. And he, you know, I said, well, a few months. And he said, well, I predict June 14th. And I was like, okay. I said, well, I predict June 24th. I said, I think we're going to have it a few more days than that. And we joked about it, but I chose the 24th just because it was my birthday and I wanted that to be my birthday present. It didn't happen. And now, if you, you know, if you listen to the experts, they are saying it's going to be around for several more years. They do think it will be eradicated down the road, but we're in this. So we've got to learn to manage and not panic when you hear about someone having COVID. I will tell you, of those seven people plus the four in memory support, no one has needed to go to the hospital, no one has died. People, it's nuisance symptoms that you get. You know, the runny nose, the cold symptoms, the fatigue. I'm not saying people don't get those, they do. So you're kind of down and out for up to five to seven days, but you're not having the symptoms that we had back in 2020 and 2021 because now all of you were very smart to get yourselves vaccinated. The majority of our staff members are vaccinated. So we're really managing it quite well. But it is going to continue. The other question I've been asked, we cannot tell you who's positive. I know you would all love to know for obvious reasons so that you would know to stay away from them or even say, huh, I was with them for dinner the other night. We can't do that. But if you want to share amongst yourselves, there's no violation resident to resident. I'm not saying, you know, go on the main floor and tell everybody, by the way, I have COVID. But if you have neighbors that you've been with a lot, let's say you had dinner with someone three nights this week and now you have COVID, you might want to just give them a jingle because then they can let us know. So we do what we call contact tracing. The soon as we hear of a positive case, we look at every one that you've been in contact with for the past two days because they say you're contagious two days before you actually show the positive result. So we generally go back two days. Can we miss somebody? Sure, we may not know about an interaction that you had in the bistro. But I would say, for the most part, our contact tracing is so well-done now, we rarely miss anybody. But again, if you know of someone, you know, you hear about someone that's positive and you were with them and if we haven't reached out to you, do reach out to community nursing and let them know so that we can make sure we're testing you just to minimize exposures. So the whole thing now is, you know, we're trying to prevent as much COVID as possible, but it's to minimize the spread. That's really our goal because people are unfortunately going to get COVID. As far as masking, I would definitely say, if you're of the mindset that you're concerned about getting COVID, you should wear a mask. If you're in larger groups, I would say at this point, you should wear a mask. So again, you have to do what is in your own comfort level. We're not mandating masking. The Department of Public Health said they will not mandate that again. At least, they're saying that now. If we have a big surge or outbreak, they might change their mind. But if anything, they've actually loosened up some of the guidelines. So I think they're expecting communities and people in general to learn to live with this rather than restricting because they used to give us lots of mandates almost on a daily basis where you must do this, where that's not the case anymore. They're actually taking some of those restrictions away. Any questions about COVID? Alina?
I saw somewhere that the iHeart COVID test, the expiration date has been extended three months.
Yes.
Because the expiration date is at the end of July.
Yeah, a lot of them have, you know, the tests we use, which is an Abbott test, they extended those by six months. But the home test kits, they did extend as well. Any other questions? No? Okay, then I'm going to call up Maria Freida.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you all. My name is Maria Freida and I am the Director of Resident Services and a very warm welcome to Mr. Heizer, if you are here. Resident Services provides the following services: reception, transportation, security, and the spa on Main. Besides these front-of-house services, behind-the-scenes, Resident Services is the campus communication hub and acts as a coordinator of special programming and community engagement events, thanks to Managers Melissa, Gil, and Janet and the department's teammates who make it all happen. And you've probably noticed that there are a few new smiling faces at the North and South desks. And I'm happy to say that over the past few months, thanks to Lynn Brown, the department has hired eight new part-time and per diem team members. They are Nan Rivera in security, Brendan Mendoza in security, Cynthia Valibos in security, and Mike Friedman, and Jennifer Latella. And in reception is Tricia Sullivan. And today, we have our two newest team members, Jennifer Page, who you will meet at the South Desk, and Cynthia Sanchez, who is at the North Desk. So I'm sure you'll all give them a very warm Whitney Center welcome. So now for the topic of my day, and that's cultural engagement. I'm happy to say that our summer trip schedule was filled with visits to some of Connecticut's most interesting and beautiful museums. A special thank you to our drivers, Yvonne and Tashima, for getting everyone to their destination safely and on time. And trips arranged through the West Haven Senior Center, organized by our weekend receptionist, Donna McLennan, took some of you and some of your neighbors even beyond our local borders. In fact, there are still a few residents who continue to take advantage of the welcomed partnership, tapping their way to good speed to C-42nd Street on Wednesday, September 21st. This is an easy coach bus ride that includes transportation and lunch. And those of you who are going, you should have received an itinerary via email yesterday afternoon. Note, the new departure time will be at 9:15 from the South Desk and I'll be sure to send you a reminder as we get closer to the date. With fall creeping closer and after two-and-a-half-year wait, I'm really happy to say that the Yale School of Music concerts are back. Some of you are longtime Series subscription holders and some of you may just need one concert fix. So either way, if you have tickets or thinking of purchasing tickets, and that would be to the Yale Philharmonia, O'Neppo, or Horowitz, I will be at the bistro from 12:30 to 2 o'clock today, signing you up for Whitney Center transportation. Note that Whitney Center is not purchasing tickets, but residents and Thrive at Home members are asked to purchase their tickets individually through the Yale School of Music box office. Of course, if you need any assistance, I'd be happy to help you with that. Note that there are 21 musical performances on the Yale 2022 to 2023 calendar. And I'm sure there'll also be interest in some of the theatrical performances. Such, even with transportation being provided for the musical concerts, I'm sure there will be transportation also for the theatrical productions as well. Much of that transportation will depend on the number of attendees. An individual, as you know, Whitney Center is a shared transportation service. It is not a chauffeured service. So, but if someone needs a ride, we'd be happy to offer you alternative accommodations. So, and those particular circumstances will be based on the individual need. Also, if you're interested in getting a peek at behind-the-scenes view of The Tempest, the Elm Shakespeare Company has invited Whitney Center residents and Thrive at Home members to see a rehearsal at Southern Connecticut Community College. That's happening on August 3rd at 2:00 p.m. So come to the table as well today to reserve a seat on that bus. And of course, transportation will be provided on Thursday, September 1st for the performance of The Tempest in Edgerton Park. That's actually going to be a really very special evening for Whitney Center because Whitney Center's frontline staff will be spotlighted on stage. So it'll be a celebration of Whitney Center as the lead sponsor for The Tempest itself. So let me say that reserving trips for the seats for those buses will all, will be easier and at your fingertips through the K4 Connect app, which is going to be wonderful. So whether you're going to, whether it's shopping or any, anything, with the exception of medical appointments, the app will make everything so much more accessible for you. It'll even allow you to set reminders on your calendar that you have a trip that day. So, and you'll be learning so much more about that next week through IT and, of course, our champion, our K4 champion, Herb Kaladny, which is wonderful. So I'm anticipating a few other museum trips in the fall. I know some of you had wanted to go to Hillstead, but were unable to go. So that will probably be on the docket. So looking at maybe fall foliage trips into some of the farmers' markets will also be up for discussion. So as soon as anything like that happens, you'll all be the first to know. So it was Dorothy Gale, and I didn't realize that Dorothy's last name was Gale in The Wizard of Oz, who said, "There's no place like home." And from what I've seen and heard, Whitney Center is the place to be this summer for the Summer Speaker Series, to the Seventh Art Production Films, to the Sunday Concert Series. So thank you to all of the residents who have participated in those programs. And this Monday, the CAC welcomes a Thrive at Home member, John Strauss, who will be presenting To Understand a Person and the Unexpected Beauties of Writing and Autobiography. So thank you so much for all of your support to me. I know we went, kind of went out and took a chance this summer with adding to the programs, but it's been wonderful to really be able to feature all of the wonderful passion that the Whitney Center community holds so close to their heart and that they're willing to share it with all of you. So does anyone have any questions regarding trips? And if not right now, I'm happy to answer questions at the table. All right, see you at 12:30. And now it's my pleasure to interview, interview, yeah. Yeah, so can you tell us about yourself, Thomas Hudson? So I'd like to introduce Tom Hudson, our Director of Dining Services. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Oh, no, 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 let's try again. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. I'm here for my interview. I heard, I heard from a birdie that we may not have a lot of speakers today. So I took the liberty of preparing a 16-page report. Please bear with me, settle in, buckle up. Let's spend a little time together today. Dining is a hot topic as always, so I wanted to share some thoughts, some ideas, some happenings. And I've kind of set them out based on our dining venues. So I want to start with the bistro first. It was brought to my attention that there was some inequalities with our two buffets. Nobody know about that? Okay, let me explain. So I heard that one buffet was offering almost all you could eat, salads and desserts, while one wasn't. So we had to look at that pretty quickly. So I want to let you know that a buffet in the bistro now, until we change our service back to normal, is, we will be offering a salad. So you can go to the salad bar and the server will prepare a salad for you. And we do have an assortment of desserts there to go along with your buffet meal in the evening. All right? I'm just kidding. No, no. Right? So we want to make sure that we, the service we're offering in the pub is mirrored in the bistro for this period of time. So please, the servers will be offering you, if you'd like to come back and have a little more, that's fine with us also, okay? All right. In regards to the changes we've had to make in the bistro over a period of time, I want to thank you all for your patience and your understanding. And I want you to know that we are doing everything we can to get it back to normal. We have a scheduled date, which is August 21st. It is my intention and the Dining Services team intention to get you back, get the bistro grill back up and running for evening service on the 21st. You may take note of that date. However, if anything changes between now and then, I'll be sure to advise you accordingly and in a timely fashion. But we're working towards the 21st of having the grill back open in the evening. Is that me? I don't know if anyone has noticed in the bistro, we're experiencing some lighting issues. Over the cooks' area, we have some lighting fixtures that have gone bad. Our maintenance team is looking into that and it should be fixed as soon as they can. But in case you see it a little dark, that's what's happening, okay? A hot topic, but a cold issue is ice cream. We've had some questions about our ice cream service, what's available, where it's available, and so on. So I want to share with you all that the Dining Services team, with much deliberation, chose a new company, which we now work with Hershey's Ice Cream. Now, what Hershey's offered us was the opportunity to provide a much wider scope of ice cream and ice cream products, not just for the MRC, but for our health center. So we looked at that and it was a wise choice. Contrary to popular belief, it was not based on money. It was based on the availability and the diversity of the products that we could get from Hershey's. Now, having said that, there are other ice creams we offer, which are the Ben &amp; Jerry's and the Haagen-Dazs. Those will continue to be available in the corner store for your purchasing pleasure. Okay? Moving on to center stage. We are currently reviewing our reservation system. I know over time, there's been questions, there have been thoughts, there's been suggestions. The Dining Services team, we're now doing some work on that. We're looking at what is working, what isn't working, what's, and trying to create that balance between our team and what the residents expect and can work with. So by our next meeting, our next town hall meeting, wherever that is, in September or August, I will, well, whenever it is, by then, I will have a different structure to explain, if it changes, so I can explain to you what we're going to do going forward and how we can make this work for everyone and for us. We're updating our wine list. For those who enjoy wine with their meal in center stage, we've realized that there are some items that are not popular. We've removed them. We've condensed the list a little more and we think it's quite appropriate and suitable and enjoyable for those who enjoy a glass of wine. So look forward to that coming up soon. We'll let you know when it's ready to go and we'll have a new wine list. While I'm on center stage, I would like to make note of something that's very important to me and to my team and I hope to you as residents also. We, we in Dining Services, we're committed to providing a dining experience for you all. We've tasked ourselves with that responsibility. We also have a responsibility to offer our staff a place that's safe and comfortable for them to work. We have had instances, and I've received a number of notes from some of my staff of having been subjected to rude or insultive comments. And I just want to ask you, I can't tell you anything, but what I'd like to ask you is to, in those circumstances, when there's a misunderstanding, that you be patient, that you be, exercise that civility with our staff and let us work through whatever issue it is. Because especially in a time like this, it's difficult for staff to be feeling that they're being spoken to or being handled in a way that they don't feel is necessary or comfortable. So all I can do is ask us all to recognize that they are trying their best and we just want to work together to give you the best experience possible. Okay, let's head on down the road to the pub. We've introduced our coffee service recently. I don't know if anyone has tried it out yet, but we do have coffee available in the pub after your meal. Please, ask for it, it's there. The servers are ready. You can have a variety of coffees. I think there's espresso and lattes and whatever you'd like. So give it a whirl. Even if you haven't eaten in the pub, feel free to come on over and sit and have a coffee in the living room or just relax. We'd love to see you enjoying that service. Last week, Friday, we had our first in a series of tastings. Was anyone there? How was it? Good. We heard it was wonderful. I heard that everyone had a good time. Now, that was just the first in the series of tastings for the rest of the year. We will have one every month. I would encourage you to come on over. We always have nibbles to go with whatever we're tasting. And it's just a good time. It's enjoyable, it's informative, and, you know, nothing wrong with a little taste of something alcoholic in the afternoon. Our next tasting is August 19th and we'll be having some tropical cocktails. So what, no cheer for tropical cocktails? Oh, okay, I was wondering. So please, we, but what we're gonna, what we realized we didn't do last time is we did not spread the word enough. Okay? So we're in the, in the week or the two weeks leading up, you're going to get notifications, there'll be reminders. So we can have a real good group of us over there, all right? After drink selection, you all have probably heard me speak about this before, we've created a specific after-dinner drink selection. There's a specific menu. It'll be about 12 different drinks, I believe. There'll be a chartreuse, ice wine, a single malt scotch. There'll be sherry, there's a port. Beautifulness. We'll have that available and ready next week. So one of the things that go in conjunction with that is that the pub is going to be open until 8:00. Okay? There is no need, absolutely no need for us to run away at 7:00. We will be open until 8:00. We're inviting you, even after your meal in center stage. Come over to the pub, sit, try one of these after-dinner drinks and just relax. We'll play a little music and we'll just have a good time. So we're really inviting you. So we're really inviting you to come over, I'm gonna put the list out probably up on our screen, so as you're passing, you can see that there. Okay? Um. Last thing in the pub is, we will not have a bartender on Saturday sixth and thirteenth of August. So that's Saturday sixth and Saturday thirteenth of August, we will not have a bartender, however, your meal will still be there and we will provide a selection of ready to drink cocktails um, for your pleasure, to go along with your meal. The last time we did that, um, it was a rip-roaring success. The difference is, on that occasion, they were free. Um, going forward, there will be a small charge for those drinks. We will add it on to your, the price of your meal, so it'll be all inclusive, but it will, won't be anything that'll break the bank and it should be a very comfortable purchase. Alright? Um, and lastly, the corner store, just to let you know, we are almost ready to start our farmer's market on a Saturday. So stay tuned for the date on that. We're gonna start small and then see how things go, but we're looking at some products we wanna sell and produce and so on, so we'll give you all the information you need in a, in another week or so and we'll get that started, we hope you come down on a Saturday and pick up a few things and, and just enjoy the atmosphere that we create. Okay? Alright, now, are there any questions? Come on, Robert. Dr. Askinis.
Well, with drinks, you're covering a lot of territory, wonderfully. What you didn't mention was the availability regularly of different kinds of mixed cocktails pre-dinner. Where do we stand with that category?
Mixed cocktails pre-dinner?
When Donovan was here, um, we had a drink of the week, uh, or we had a, a wide variety of cocktail choices.
Yeah.
Where, where do we stand now?
You can always get cocktails in the bar. We've never stopped that.
In center stage.
If you ask your server, they will get your cocktail. Now, the cocktail of the week, while it was a beautiful concept, it was not, um, there wasn't enough uptake on it. But it did look nice and we did appreciate what Donovan did in that case, but it wasn't a sustainable product. Um, but for your regular cocktails that you enjoy, if you're having dinner in center stage and you'd like a cocktail, ask your server. They'll go over, they'll get it at the bar and they'll bring it back for you.
Robert, uh, will the pub have tea as well as, will the pub have tea as well as coffee?
Oh, certainly, we do have tea along with that. We have tea, there is tea available there now. We, we knew, we remembered you. When we were, I, I'll be very honest, we did remember, I remember a conversation I had with you over tea. So when we were setting it up in the, in the pub, we made sure that we had tea there just in case.
Thank you very much.
It is my pleasure.
With your tastings and your, um, nights where you don't have um, your bartender, so you're gonna include drinks, are you also gonna start offering more, um, non-alcoholic, um, options for people that cannot have alcohol?
Am I going, so the question is, am I going to offer more? I didn't necessarily intend to, but I can. What do you have in mind? Cause we do have, we do have non-alcoholic wines always available. We have both red and white available at any given time.
Okay, but what I'm thinking is, the various tastings that you do?
Mm-hmm.
Do the tastings include non-alcohol?
Oh, the actual tastings?
Right.
Oh, I can, I can make that happen for you. We can make that happen, so what we will do, for instance, with our tropical cocktails, we'll make sure there is a non-alcoholic cocktail also. Or two. Is that, is that okay? I will be looking out for you, you and I shall share one, alright? Is there any other questions?
Yes, Thomas.
Hello, Ms. Greenbaum.
That's right, the witch on the broomstick is sitting here.
Oh, no. Who said that?
Thomas, when, I think it's lovely that you are opening up for drinks post-dinner. Do you also have a place that the residents who are enjoying this know there's a place to put their empty glasses and napkins? So that if there's no staff there, you know, to tell them or clean up, that there is a place for them to deposit these things, so that those people coming down in the morning or guests coming in don't see a living room cluttered from last night, any more than what we do in our own homes. Is that, is that out of reason?
Oh, no, not at all, that's quite, that's quite a reasonable question. One of the things we've recognized recently is that we do have a few people who stay after the pub has been closed. But one of the things connected with that is that we've been closing too early. So our staff have left at a point that I believe they need to be there further. So one of the things I mentioned is we're going to be open later. So there is, the staff in the bar will do a walk around at the end of their shift. However, my closing manager, whoever is closing our operation in night, at the night, will also be charged with the responsibility of doing a complete check. So we wouldn't find anything left in the living room, everything will be taken up. I'm, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to hand over responsibility to a resident that you have to go and put this here, that I, I believe that's our responsibility to take these things up. So we're working on that, we're gonna put that system in place and make sure it happens.
Thank you, the witch is flying away now.
I'll, I'll ride with you. Alright, if there's no other questions, I bid you farewell. Have a great day, rest of the week and I'll see you on the other side of the weekend. I am going to call up Mr. Dan, supervisor of maintenance, to tell you all the good stuff about this.
Hi, everybody. Uh, wanted to go over a, a couple things. Uh, the tile on Main Street, if you've noticed, has been repaired, the pieces that were cracked. There were some areas where some grout, you know, was chipped out, those have also been repaired. Um, obviously, everything's fine to walk on now, we removed all of the, uh, the ropes and everything and, and that's all, all set to go. A lot of people inquired on why that would happen. Basically, this is all just a concrete slab that does, you know, the building shifts, uh, different seasons, there are expansion, contraction, things like that. Uh, just that little bit of movement, you know, can, can cause things to pop. Uh, but there was only a few tiles, you know, for how, however long that, uh, that floor has been there, so. You know, could it happen again? Yes, I'm not gonna guarantee you that it's not gonna happen again, but you know, I'm pretty confident that, uh, the majority of it is in good shape. The electrical infrastructure project, uh, over the past couple weeks, there have been some shutdowns uh, that all, you know, that information was out in memos. Uh, we've done some changeovers with the generator power to the street power. Uh, we are in really good shape with that, it's, it's pretty much coming to a close, uh, hopefully sometime late August is the goal, where there'll pretty much be no contractors on site anymore. Everything will be good to go. Uh, a lot of which happens behind the scenes, you don't even know about because it, it's kinda done, you know, late at night or early morning hours where nobody's really affected by it. The light in the elevator that goes to the basement, I know that that is a hot topic also. Uh, we are waiting on parts for that. And we have no ETA, we have no shipping date. Uh, the wholesalers can't give any dates on any of the material, cause they just do not know when they're gonna get it. So that's really where we stand with that, that's the most honest answer that I could give. Um, you know, for, for however long we have to, we have to just deal with that temporary light in that elevator. Those are the only things I really wanted to hit on today, are there any questions from anybody?
Uh, Dan, uh, the, um, main entrance, uh, in the north was hit by a truck a few years back, the canopy?
Right.
The corner, is that scheduled to be, uh, repaired? It doesn't look very nice.
Insurance, right? So that's still in, uh, dealing with insurance right now. So we actually wouldn't be the ones repairing that anyways. The insurance company has to deal with that and then contractors will come out and fix that, so I, I don't really know where that stands, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Uh, Karen.
Karen, thanks, Dan. Good morning, everyone, um, I'm Karen Lushink, I am the Vice President of Employee Services. So I just wanted to, uh, share with everybody that we are still, as you all know, continuing our recruiting efforts as well as focusing a lot on our retention efforts around our current employees and our current team members. So, um, while we continue to recruit, we are currently, um, have thirteen open positions that are posted that we are looking for. Of those thirteen, six of them are full-time positions, so we currently have six full-time positions open um, with approximately seven part-time or per diem positions open that we're looking for. Um, we are very happy to say that we welcomed six new team members in the month of July and we currently are working with six candidates to, um, join us at the beginning of August, so that number should also go up as August continues. But this is usually a time that we will see a slowdown in applications. It's summertime, people are enjoying vacations, the warmth, spending time with their kids. So, um, we do know it has slowed down a little bit, but it usually does pick up again come the fall, so we continue working on those recruiting efforts. Um, on the retention side, we are continuing to work uh, with our executive coaches and the entire leadership team is still working with them, uh, learning, growing and talking about how can we build a culture really around the team member experience? And creating a culture where all of our staff feel connected to their teams, to their team members, where we're creating this sense of belonging to the much larger community. So we continue to do that work, focusing on looking at sort of the three pillars um, of leadership, management and coaching and developing those skills within our leadership team, which we are hopeful will also then lead to those outcomes of being able to retain our team members. We had a great meeting, um, a couple weeks ago, last week? The leadership team spent a few hours together, um, talking about that vision that we wanted to create and talking about how we can move those things forward and what are things that we can put into place, so. Um, that is something that we will be working on for the next year or so with our team and then continuing to build that as we go, so. Um, that is where we are with, uh, recruiting and retention. Any questions? Thank you very much. Michelle Pandolfi.
Uh, good morning, everyone, uh, please pardon my, my voice. This is the second time I've had laryngitis this month. Um, but it's not COVID, so I'm happy to say that. Um, just a quick update, I, for those of you who haven't already heard, uh, we are moving forward with the meditation space, um, so a meditation room um, will be created where the bridge room currently exists. Um, Mark and Kara have sent that out and they'll be working on that, um, within, um, the next couple of weeks. Um, and thank you again to all the mahjong, um, ladies who were so gracious to, to move their game over to the plant room, which will now be a shared space there, so I appreciate that. Um, and a quick couple updates about, uh, Thrive at Home. Um, in June, we welcomed Bruce Seelof of New Haven to the program and, um, just a couple of days ago, we welcomed Jane Kopic of New Haven as well to the program. Um, so we're excited to have them there, we have, um, we've accepted eighty-nine people already to the Thrive at Home program, so we're pretty, we're pretty thrilled about that. Um, and if you could all just keep in your thoughts and prayers, we did lose a Thrive at Home member. Um, his name is Richard Zitzer of Woodbridge, so some of you may have known him, but if you could just keep him in your thoughts and prayers, that would be great too. Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Michelle. So, um, Rafaela was unable to attend today, so, uh, I'm transferring, transforming into Rafael. So I'm gonna be a little bit taller and maybe, we, we won't, we won't say anything else. I'm gonna be a little bit taller and a little bit thinner right now. I, I can't say that. So there's two, two updates, uh, from Rafael. Uh, one is gonna be on the K four community app, which Maria already introduced earlier today. And the other is on our autonomous vehicle. So in regards to our K four community app, um, so right now, by now, I hope that you've all read the memo distributed, distributed on Friday, July fifteenth. The memo listed several frequently asked questions about our new K four community app. And is outline, and it also outlined the implementation and demonstration schedule. Currently, our IT team has completed providing access to the app to all North Building residents. We will use the rest of this week's time to circle back to any resident who were not available, um, when, when they went to visit. The plan is to begin working through the South Building, uh, next, this coming Monday through Wednesday. And again, on Thursday and Friday, they will visit anybody in the South Building who was missed. As reminder, the app will officially launch on Monday, August first. And you will find community information, calendar of events, uh, resident and staff phone directory and many other features. So it's a very exciting time. We are, we are excited, and as Maria alluded to this, we are excited to report that our very own Herb Collagney, Herb, are you here today? No. Uh, Herb will conduct the live and in-person demonstrations of the community app right here in the CAC on August eighth, ninth, tenth and thirteenth, and twelfth. So that's August eighth, ninth, tenth and twelfth, Herb will be doing live demonstrations. As the IT team installed the app for you, hopefully you reserved a spot for the demonstration. If you've not reserved a spot, please consider attending one of the demonstrations as Herb will demonstrate all the features, including how to view your dining point balance, charge account balance, how to enter a work order, uh, video calls, you can text fellow residents, to name a few. So you, you, as you can see, this is a very powerful application. And, uh, we know it will, some, some residents on the leading edge will pick it up right away. That's why we have people like Herb that's gonna be teaching this. And other people, it'll take a little bit longer and that's okay, just, you know, don't get frustrated, just enjoy the journey of trying this new app. Um, it's gonna be wonderful for connection and engagement. Please recognize that there's extensive work performed behind the scenes to configure the community app. We are still working to complete the dining section of the app, where, where you will have all sorts of dining information to view, such as menus, daily specials and gen- general venue information. We expect this final leg of the implementation to be completed by September fifth. So that, uh, I will pause there, that's the K four community, um, app update. As you can see, um, Nick and, and the IT team will be coming to your apartments, getting you all set up. And then there's gonna be the, the whole demonstration, August eighth, ninth, tenth and twelfth. So, um, I'm hoping that you're all gonna enjoy this journey, it's gonna be wonderful, yes?
I want to complain about sexual discrimination on that app. It was put on my husband's phone, nobody offered to put it on mine.
Okay, we will certainly get that information, that when we, when we go to a resident apartment with a couple, we'll make sure that they get on both of them. Okay? Uh, any other questions? See, in my family, you go on my wife's phone and not mine.
Hi, will you still be sending out the, the weekly printed sheets with all the information about, uh, activities?
So we, we'll still continue that for the time being, we have to, we have to talk about the whole communication. about the whole communication piece with Janet, and with Maria, and, and with the IT team. So we will certainly look into doing that, especially initially, we'll have to do that, but going forth, we'll, we're gonna have to evaluate that.
So there must be a lot of people who are not comfortable with doing this.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll evaluate all of that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other questions on the K4 Community App? If not, I'm gonna move over to our autonomous vehicle. So the autonomous vehicle arrived this week. The representative from Will, Malcolm, has been here assembling the vehicle and mapping out the community. With your help, we expect to begin test, uh, passenger testing, starting on Monday, uh, August 1st, and that will run through August 12th. The vehicle path during the trial will be, uh, starting at the South Desk and going to the Bistro with a couple of stops, stopping points in between. While the vehicle's use is intended for those who truly need the assistance, please, please join us during the trial, and don't hesitate to use the vehicle whether you need assistance or not, because we really do want your feedback and your perspective on this, on this vehicle. Um, so we're, again, we're gonna be doing all sorts of testing over the next couple of weeks. Um, Karen Lushings, our Head of, uh, Employee Services, our VP, has offered to throw herself in front of the vehicle. Um, workman comp, so Karen can handle that. Um, so no, we're excited. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Um, I, we put them, we had, we, we, we've been working with a group of residents. We call it our ad hoc transportation, uh, uh, resident, um, committee. And so I've asked all of them to come join us, uh, eight, 10 o'clock, August 1st, in the South Building to look, to start the trials. But you're all welcome. If you're curious, you can come to the South Building, 10 o'clock, we're gonna start it then. So it should be, it should be very interesting, it should be fun. Uh, leading edge. We, we're, we're leading the way here. So, uh, it will be exciting. We, we really do need your feedback. We really do.
Is it local or express?
Um, it will be a local. It will be a local. It will not be express. Great question. Um, so finally, I'd like to just make a comment. I put a, uh, put a memo out this week about absentee ballot applications. Uh, please, um, if you do want, um, a, an absentee ballot mailed to you, you have to fill out an application. Um, and if you are concerned about COVID still going to the, to the booths, just, you just mark off sick, and they'll, they'll send you the form. So please get those in, uh, no later than tomorrow, those applications will drop them off at the, um, at the town hall tomorrow afternoon. So try to get them in all, in by, by noon.
At the front desk?
Yeah, yeah, to either desk. They're collecting them. And those applications are there as well. Yes?
Ken, on the, um, autonomous vehicle, um, you said that it's only gonna go between the South Desk and the Bistro? It's not gonna go to the North Desk?
For, for this trial period, because we're just testing out, we're just testing it out. If we believe that this is something for our community, then certainly eventually the path will be along that way. But we're just doing, we're just testing it right now to make sure that it works for our community.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions at this time?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask you if you would repeat. Uh, the CAC at 10 o'clock, when?
Oh, so, so, on Monday, um, at 10 o'clock, we're gonna meet at the, uh, the South Desk.
South Desk, okay.
The South Desk, yes. Yeah, to start the trial. Um, one other piece of information, uh, Mrs. Weiss and Joe wanted me to share, that in August, there'll be no Resident Council meeting. Um, typically, uh, our town meetings, uh, we typically do not have a regular town meeting in August. Sometimes we do reserve that time to do some type of special program, special presentation. Uh, upon Mike's return, we'll see if we wanna, uh, do that or not. Um, so just keep an eye out on your K4 Community App. How do you like that? I combined that right in there. Okay. If there are no other questions, we can adjourn the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.